For all the lights working properly? Everything working right tonight?
We hope.
Alright, good.
That's our hope.
Good. Good evening, I'll call the meeting of April 20th, 2021, I guess it is, it says April 20th. It's the 21st.
21st.
Alright. Uh, to order of the City Council of Commerce City. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Bullock.
Here.
Councilmember Amador.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Carston.
Present.
Councilman Benson, you don't have to push buttons, I got you covered.
Oh.
Councilman McAdonan.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Great, thank you, please let the record show that, uh, Mr. Benson will not be with us tonight. Um, he has, uh, asked to have the night off and I need to, uh, he had some work to take care of. Um, he requested this last Monday, if I could get someone to make a motion to excuse, um, Mr. Benson.
Motion to excuse, uh, Mr. Benson?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to allow Mr. Benson's absence to be excused. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is, uh, the need for an executive session. It's actually two executive sessions. Um, I'm open for a motion to go into those executive sessions. Mr. Bullock.
Move to go into executive session, uh, pursuant to CRS 24 day six, day 402, parentheses four, parentheses E, and 26, both of them are 26 day 402, parentheses four and parentheses E, for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding agreement for Victory Crossing Development, and the other one is for the purpose of instructing negotiators concerning the lease for the Counter Heritage and Cultural Center.
Thank you, Mr. McAdonan.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go into executive session for the reasons previously stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. I would ask, uh, the audience to please bear with us. Uh, we will be in executive session for approximately an hour.
Oh, a copy.
So we'll be back, um, as soon as we're done.
[inaudible]
Andy?
Yes?
I don't know, just tell you really, really thank you. Joy. Joy?
Somehow, right?
I like that. We got... Nice. that are still in the hospital from the accident involving the Adam City High School kids at 73rd and Highway Two. If you'll please keep those folks in mind during our moment of silence and then we'll follow that up by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if I can have the staff go ahead and pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Landon and this is my daughter Victoria Perrot.
Hi, I'm Drake Hollenbeck.
Hi, I'm Megan McKinney.
Danny Thomas.
Betty Thomas.
Pam Sattler.
A.J. McKinney.
Mr. C.
Hi, my name is Lovely.
Scott Reed.
Guillermo Serna.
Paul Solano with RTD.
Alex Villagrande candidate for Adams County Treasurer.
Esperanza Hernandez.
Hygiena Jimenez.
Alma Jimenez.
Sam Hueness.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Tony Hadameo Parks and Recreation.
I'm Keith Wood with Colorado State Forest Service.
Karen O'Donnell Parks and Recreation.
Carlotta Barnes.
Kathleen Blackman, Human Resources.
Roger Kingenberg, City of Commerce.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Cheryl Carston's Finance Department.
Elaine Schubert Commerce City Youth Commission.
Katie Homer Commerce City Youth Commission.
Dana Schubert Commerce City Youth Commission.
I'm All Sing Commerce City Youth Commission.
Juan Raddello Commerce City Youth Commission.
Anna Ruiz Commerce City Youth Commission.
Abigail Jimenez Chair of the Commerce City Youth Commission.
Julia Mco Commerce City Youth Commission.
Great, thank you very much. Again, welcome. I'm going to start the meeting off with our proclamations and recognitions portion of the meeting and today we're going to recognize Arbor Day with proclamation. If I could ask the Commerce City Parks and Rec staff and Mr. Wood to please come forward. I will ask Mr. Gaylor to please read the proclamation once they reach the podium.
Office of the Mayor, Commerce City, Colorado, proclamation. Whereas the City of Commerce City desires to recognize and observe Arbor Day along with others across the nation and throughout the world. And whereas the City of Commerce City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 23rd consecutive year. And whereas the City Council and staff wish to promote an interest in the planting of trees in residential areas as well as city-owned parks, trails, and open space. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, on behalf of City of Commerce City, City Council do hereby proclaim that April 21, 2014 is known as Arbor Day in Commerce City, recognized with activities such as providing tree seedlings to the community. Be further resolved that the council urges all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees, woodlands, and support the tree, the city's community forestry program. City of Commerce City, Colorado, Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. All right, before I ask for a motion, Tony and Mr. Wood, do you have anything you'd like to say before we get into the vote underway?
I do. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. On behalf of the Commerce City Park and Recreation Department, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to celebrate Arbor Day. Also joining us this evening is Keith Wood with Colorado State Forest Service to present the Tree City, or to present Commerce City with our 23rd consecutive Tree City USA award. And I'm honored to say that I've been here for all 23 of those. In celebration of Arbor Day, we have some tree seedlings available as you guys have up there. We also have some in the back. Feel free to take some with you. We also have a identification card or information pamphlet on the Emerald Ash Bore, which you're well aware of. Those were provided by the Department of Agriculture. Also this year, our youth recreation coordinator Yasmin Cassini worked with an after-school program in our community to participate in the Colorado Tree Coalition poster contest. Briefly, this program is statewide poster contest which is sponsored by ArborScape Services, the Colorado Tree Coalition, and the Colorado State Forest Service. Also, on Wednesday, the 23rd at 9:30, I will be joining and I believe Mayor, you will be there as well, the City of Brighton as they celebrate Arbor Day with a tree planting ceremony at Turnberry Elementary School. I would now like to introduce Keith Wood to present the council with the 23rd consecutive Tree City USA award.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you, Mayor and councilors, for the time on the agenda tonight. I always appreciate coming out here to award your Tree City. And as Tony said, it's the 23rd that Commerce City has received and it's an application process that Tony and his staff have to go through every year, make sure they're meeting the four standards to be a Tree City USA. So, we make sure that Tony is in place or someone is in place here at the community that's responsible for tree planting and care. Tony and his staff do that. The tree ordinance is the second standard, we make sure that is in place. The per capita expenditures for tree program in the budget, so it's $2 per capita, that has to be met, and then having your Arbor Day observance and proclamation read as well. That's the fourth standard. So you guys have done that for 23 years and as shown by the way you get involved with these various programs, some of the statewide programs and things like that, you're connected with a lot of statewide resources and also the other communities in the state so you can not be on your own in managing your tree populations. Just wanted to mention a few of the accomplishments too that occurred in the tree program last year. There were 41 trees replaced along, yeah, replaced along Quebec Parkway. 54 trees were planted for the renovation of Fairfax Park through a grant that Tony was able to receive. And then 17 new trees were planted in various city parks as well. So, a good diversity of trees went in last year for the program. And over the past 23 years, Tony crunched some numbers here, 23 years of Tree City, you've planted approximately 1,500 new trees throughout the cities owned and maintained parks, trails, open space, and public right-of-way properties. So, Tony's keeping track of that and I was talking to him too and this Emerald Ash Bore is definitely a threat, definitely in the northwest metro area over to Boulder because the infestation is in Boulder now and we expect it to move into the metro area here and impact our ash tree populations fairly significantly. But Tony was saying he pretty much scaled back the planting of ash trees 10, 12 years ago. And I was asking him the percentage and I think you may have received that information in a packet, but you have a very small percentage of ash compared to a lot of communities, thanks to the foresight of Tony and his staff here in appropriately planting a diverse palette of species. So you're to be commended on that and together I think our Tree City communities can manage this pest in a little bit different way than the midwestern U.S. communities have been. So, congratulations again, appreciate it. Here's your Tree City plaque and I'll present this to you.
I'm going to be down there in just a few minutes and you can give us that, but we've got something for you if this all goes right up here.
Okay.
And I think it probably will.
Okay.
Okay, so with that said, we've had the proclamation read. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation, Mr. McAdonick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to approve the proclamation for Tree City USA.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
I have a motion, a second, to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, the proclamation is confirmed. If everybody will please join me down front to accept the award from Tree City USA and to deliver the proclamation to Mr. Wood. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
You bet. Appreciate you. Good work.
Mr. Mayor, it's on your desk. Oh, yes. I have this drawing. It was one. I know they have one that's framed upstairs because I signed it earlier, but there you go.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Move on to our meeting. Next item on our agenda is citizen communication. We do have two people that have signed up. I would like to remind you that you're allowed three minutes. When you come up to the podium, please start by stating your name and address. We'll start with Paul Solano.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. It's great to be here. My name is Paul Solano, 6751 East 60th Avenue, Commerce City. I'm the City and RTD Director for District K, which is, I represent Commerce City, Brighton, Thornton, Henderson, and part of Fort Lepton. But I just wanted to thank everybody for the groundbreaking, how it went off, and it was a good event. And I look forward to working with Commerce City and to get the 70th and Colorado Boulevard rail station implemented and hopefully, you know, we can continue a positive communication as we have to get to this point, to get the contract. And going forward, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm also a candidate for RTD District K again this November. So, once again, thanks for, let's work together, let's get this done, RTD and all the jurisdictions that this line is going to go through. So I just wanted to, once again, just say thank you.
Okay, just a second because I want to see if anybody has any comments before I move forward since you're here. Mr. Bullock?
Thank you for coming in tonight and that was a very nice groundbreaking. I remember standing with you over there by your spike. Right. And that we refused to come out. But thank you so much for the service you've done with us for RTD.
Thank you, and we'll work together more and I'm looking forward to being here again. Thank you.
And Mr. Solano?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say that, you know, six, seven, eight years ago, when we were contemplating RTD, we were actually even earlier or later than that, here in the last three years ago, contemplating pulling out because there was a lack of anything happening and everybody was frustrated that we weren't going to get anything done here on the north end. And I'd like to thank you and RTD, the other board members, for moving things forward, finding a way to finance this north line and starting the progression of construction this year so that we can see a station at 70th and Colorado Boulevard. It will be an enhancement to our community and an opportunity for our residents to be able to traverse the metro area and it will be beneficial to our constituents.
Yes, it will. And I thank you.
So, thank you.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I'll pass that on to the RTD board. And to remind everybody, we're looking at 2018 completion.
Right.
So we're 24 years ahead of schedule.
That's right, yeah, because it was 2040 or something.
That's right.
Yeah, we appreciate everything RTD's done in the past few years to get the north line moved forward.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, council. Mayor.
Okay, next I'll call Alex. I don't want to mess up your last name, so please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, council. Thank you, citizens of Commerce City. My name is Alex Villagrande. I reside in 3641 West 101st Avenue, Westminster, Colorado, and I'm here to just share with you my candidacy as Adams County Treasurer. I feel strongly about three, how can I say, I have three values about the position that I will bring in November. The first one is which is my commitment to public service. I can't think of anything better than serving each and every person here, sitting down here, as well as everyone over here. That is, I can't think of anything better than that. The second thing is, is trust. As the county treasurer, of course, I would be the fiscal officer, the chief fiscal officer, and building trust would be very, very important to me. And I want to let everyone know, each and every person in this room know, that your money would be safe with me as your county treasurer. And the last thing is my experience. I bring a wide, a breadth, wide variety of experience to this position. The first of which is I've been a national treasurer for a 501(c)(3). The second thing is I've been a budget analyst for the American Library Association, which has $64 million in operations and I've analyzed all those budgets. The third thing is I've been a manager and administrator in the public sector for over eight years. The fourth thing I bring in experience is my investment experience. I have 16 years of investment experience. I pass licenses 7 and 66 and that is crucial for anyone who is the treasurer because the treasurer sits on the Adams County Employee Pension Fund. So that is really important and there's about 170, 200 million dollars in the fund and I can analyze that like there's no tomorrow. And I have extensive experience in different sectors. And the last thing is, this is the one thing that my father is most proud of, is that I graduated from the University of Michigan with my master's degree from the School of Information. I appreciate all your time that you've given me now. Thank you and I hope for your support.
Thank you for coming in and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item.
Right.
So we're twenty-four years ahead of schedule.
That's right, yeah, because it was 2040 or something.
That's right. It was ridiculous.
Yeah. We appreciate everything RTD's done in the past few years to get the north line moved forward.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Council.
Mayor? Okay, next I'll call Alex. I don't want to mess up your last name, so please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, citizens of Commerce City. My name is Alex Villagran. I reside in 3641 West 101st Avenue, Westminster, Colorado. And I'm here to just share with you my candidacy as Adams County Treasurer. I feel strongly about three, how can I say, I have three values about the position that I will bring in November. The first one is which is my commitment to public service. I can't think of anything better than serving each and every person here, sitting down here, as well as everyone over here. I can't think of anything better than that. The second thing is trust. As the county treasurer, of course, I would be the fiscal officer, the chief fiscal officer, and building trust would be very, very important to me. And I want to let everyone know, each and every person in this room know, that your money would be safe with me as your county treasurer. And the last thing is my experience. I bring a wide breadth, wide variety of experience to this position. The first of which is I've been a national treasurer for a 501(c)(3). The second thing is I've been a budget analyst for the American Library Association, which has $64 million in operations, and I've analyzed all those budgets. The third thing is I've been a manager and administrator in the public sector for over eight years. The fourth thing I bring in experience is my investment experience. I have sixteen years of investment experience. I passed licenses seven and sixty-six, and that is crucial for anyone who is the treasurer because the treasurer sits on the Adams County Employee Pension Fund. So that is really important, and there's about $170, $200 million in the fund, and I can analyze that like there's no tomorrow. And I have extensive experience in different sectors. And the last thing is, this is the one thing that my father is most proud of, is that I graduated from the University of Michigan with my master's degree from the School of Information. I appreciate all your time that you've given me now. Thank you, and I hope for your support.
Thank you for coming in and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are six items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove any of the items that are listed on the consent agenda? Mr. McAdonick?
No, sir. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Prepared to make a motion.
Sure. I am open for a motion, Mr. McAdonick.
Thank you. I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Attorney, will you please read the titles?
Title of Resolution 2014-32, Resolution Approving An Agreement Between The City Of Commerce City and Bowman, Colorado Group LLC DBA Bowman Vision Land For Construction Management Services For East 104th Avenue Improvements Project Phase 3B. Title of Resolution 2014-38, Resolution Adopting City Procurement Policy And Establishing Effective Dates Therefore. Title of Resolution 2014-41, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance Of An Annexation Petition And Setting A Public Hearing To Determine If The Proposed Annexation Complies With Statutory Requirements For Such Annexation In Case AN 227-14. Title of Resolution 2014-42, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance Of An Annexation Petition And Setting A Public Hearing To Determine If The Proposed Annexation Complies With Statutory Requirements For Such Annexation, Case AN 228-14. Title of Resolution 2014-43, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance Of An Annexation Petition And Setting A Public Hearing To Determine If The Proposed Annexation Complies With Statutory Requirements For Such Annexation In Case AN 229-14. Title of Resolution 2014-44, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance Of An Annexation Petition And Setting A Public Hearing To Determine If The Proposed Annexation Complies With Statutory Requirements For Such Annexation, Case AN 231-14. And that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Title's been read, I have a motion and a second, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the consent agenda has been approved. Eight in favor, one excused. Next item on the agenda is the Resolution 2014-33. Does the council have any questions of staff regarding this resolution? Mr. Bullock? Mr. McAdonick? Okay, Mr. Bullock, go ahead with the motion.
Move to pass Resolution 2014-33.
Thank you, Mr. McAdonick. Second. I have a motion, a second. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this resolution? Seeing no one, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, you need the title. Go ahead, Bob, I forgot about you over there.
Title reads, for Resolution 2014-33, Resolution Approving Intergovernmental Agreement By and Between E470 Public Highway Authority And City Of Commerce City Regarding Funding Relating To Tower Road-Pena Boulevard Interchange.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is presentation portion of our agenda, and we're gonna start with the youth commission update. And I'd like to invite the youth commission members forward to introduce themselves and to make their presentation. I'm sure Julia will be there to help you. So however you have it set up, Julia, do just let them do their thing.
Good evening, mayors, and members of council. I'm actually gonna have Abby come up, Abigail Jimenez, she's our chair, and she's all ready to give you the presentation.
Perfect. Come on up, Abigail, and welcome. Pull that microphone down if you need to.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Abigail Jimenez, Chair of the Commerce City Youth Commission. Thank you for your time tonight to hear from the youth. It is an honor and my pleasure to announce to you today an update regarding our trip to Washington, D.C., to attend the National League of Cities Conference, introduce our newest members due to our increase in membership ordinance, and also share with you the aspirations our current seniors have for after graduation. Since the youth commission's establishment in 2012, we, as individuals, would have never imagined the opportunities and experiences we were to be provided with. Attending the National League of Cities Conference provided us a chance to see not only how other commissions were governed, but also new ideas that we can bring back to help Commerce City and our youth. We even made friends with Happy Valley from Oregon, and we also collaborated more with the Brighton Youth Commission, and we hope to work more with them in the future. We already have, this Saturday, we attended their suicide prevention walk, and we hope that they will also be able to collaborate with us more and come to Commerce City. We'd like to thank the Colorado Municipal League for hosting the breakfast with Senators Bennett and Udall. It might not seem like a big deal at first, but for the youth to be able to interact with real politicians shows us how tangible being in a position like that can be. If you look at the presentation behind you, you can see our group photo with Senators Bennett and Udall. We, I think I speak on behalf of all the seniors able to attend D.C. when I say that it was a pleasure to be there. Touring the monuments, like the Lincoln Statue and the Veteran Memorial, was impactful and work worth our aching feet afterwards because walking in D.C. was definitely a lot of walking. For me, attending D.C. at first was a little bit scary. It was like asking everybody to leave everything you love behind, to leave your friends, your family, to leave my little city, Commerce City, this is all I've ever been in, and this is the city that I love. But going there has broadened all of our leadership skills and our ability to communicate and engage our youth within our city. At the National League of Conference, we were, one, as a group, we wore our little matching T-shirts and we presented ourselves with professionalism and confidence, and we got to show everybody where Commerce City was from and how bold our youth are and how engaged we are and how willing we are to make a change within our city. I'm sure you'd like to hear a little bit about how our other seniors experiences with. So at this time, I'd like to welcome our vice chair, Juan Rodello, to the podium to say a few words about the trip to Washington, D.C., and some of his aspirations for after high school.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm pretty sure you guys might remember my face from a couple of months ago. And I just want to say that it was quite enjoyable to eat dinner with you guys that night before our departure. So one of the first things I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to go across the country to a place where this entire nation is run. And one of the things that I'd say that sucks to me the most was when I was on the Capitol Building and our tour guide mentioned a quote by John Quincy Adams, it links back to my aspirations, and he said, it went something like, "If your actions inspire others to be more, learn more, and be more, you are a leader." And I really liked that because it applied to how I want to build on the relationships I have in the future and how I want to let people know that everything that we do affects everyone else in the slightest way. And it's important that we stay, we keep an open mind and think about everyone around us rather than just ourselves. And I think that the youth commission and every single individual here, which by the way, the decision you guys made to expand our membership was the most brilliant thing you've ever done, by the way, since the initiation of the Commerce City Youth Commission because every single one of them is incredibly dynamic. But, I mean, it's just so, what I've experienced with the youth commission is just so powerful by the relationships I've built with Councilman Bullock and Carson, Julia, who we see now as some other figure. It's been, I mean, I've been really, really, really gifted with all this, and especially with our friends from Oregon, who actually, when I came back from school, I said, "Hey, you guys, I made some friends with this place in Oregon called Happy Valley," and they were like, "Really? That sounds like the name of a horror movie." And I'm like, "No, they're pretty happy people." But, yeah, I still keep contact with them too. The Brighton Youth Commission as well, which I think in the future is going to be a really, really, it'll be a really potent force as soon as we set an alliance or some sort. But, yeah, on to my future aspirations. I'm going to, I plan to take all these experiences with me to See You Boulder in August, and maybe one day I'll also be involved in political activities such as you guys, and you've really been an inspiration to me. And now I'd like to introduce to you our secretary, Dana Schubert.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Like Juan said, I'm Dana Schubert. I serve as secretary for the commission. I've been a founding member, so I've been on the commission for the past year and a half, and I would just like to thank you all for the opportunity you've all given us. And it's been an incredible experience the past year. We've gotten to do so many different things and be involved and get to know so many different people within our city, and it's been a pleasure getting to know all of you personally, especially getting to talk to you and tour places with you and have dinner with all of you in D.C. That was absolutely incredible. As far as my experience in D.C., I had a wonderful time, and I know I got to see things and meet people, and it was an experience unlike any other. Getting to talk to people from across the nation, not only the youth delegates that were there representing their cities, but also the city staff and councilmen and councilwomen just like you guys. And like Abby and Juan said, it was amazing to talk to them and see how they're running their cities and what they're doing and to kind of get insight on what's happening across the nation, not just in our state or in our city. So that was definitely an eye-opening experience, and I'm very thankful for all of you for giving us that opportunity. And as far as where I'm going next year, I'm headed to See You Boulder as well, and I hope to take all of this with me. It's been a growing experience, and like I said, I've learned a lot, and I'll take it all with me. So thank you all again for not only the NLC trip, but for the past year in general. And right now, I'd like to introduce Katie Homer, who's also been a founding member of the commission.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Like she said, I'm Katie Homer, and I am also a founding member of the Commerce City Youth Commission. And I would just like to thank you all for the opportunity to be a part of the, of the city council, or of the youth commission for the past year and a half, and also the opportunity to attend NLC last month. It was an awesome experience and we learned a ton. And the cool part for me was that not only were we able to attend and learn a ton from the conference itself, but we also got to sightsee and visit the monuments and learn a ton about the history and experience D.C. as a whole. So that was pretty awesome. And as far as next year goes, I will be attending CSU in the fall and studying apparel and merchandising. Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize Andre Kulchevich. He was a senior who was able to go to Washington, D.C. He'd also like to express his gratitude to city council and the mayor for allowing him to go on the trip. He really enjoyed a spy museum we went to and all the monuments. Thank you once again to mayor and city council for the opportunity. Without your support, it would not have been possible. We'd also like to thank our youth commission coordinator, Julia Emco, for being our chaperone, taking care of us and making sure that we were well-informed about our history and also how to present ourselves during the National League of Cities Conference. Upon arrival, a few weeks later, our entire commission was able to go on a trip to our state capital here in Colorado. It was hosted by Representatives Moreno and Yulibari. The image behind you shown on the right side is a presentation of the date in which we attended. It was aligned perfectly because Moreno's bill was being signed at the same time when we were able to see it and be right there and meet our governor, Hickenlooper. During the last six months, we also attended the Cherokee Diversity Conference for the second time. There, I served as a facilitator, and we were able to expand our understanding of culture and diversity and how to apply those within our schools. The Cherokee Diversity Conference may be, may be so far, my favorite workshop to attend just because I love culture and I love understanding and learning, and I gotta take some women's self-defense courses just in case I needed them in D.C., but I didn't need them. Another activity we performed was the Random Act of Kindness Week. It was actually an idea proposed by the Commerce City Youth Commission. We felt as though people within our school could be nicer to each other, and so we asked, "Hey, would you guys sign this as a pledge so that you will be more kind to your peers and promote a positive culture within our community?" And we actually got a very positive response, students to students and students to teachers. We all collaborated together and we got a lot of sparks from our Random Acts of Kindness Week. Although our actions appear to be very small at first on a scale compared to what city council does, our commission is also trying to change the way the youth are engaged and focus on issues pertinent to the youth. I honestly envision the youth making a historical impact within our city, but before we do that, before we can make a change, I feel as though we have to understand what issues there are we need to address for our youth, and that is why we are creating a youth master plan. Based on the Adams County Youth Initiative data, we've identified five areas to focus on for the youth master plan. These areas are early childhood development, youth development, education, health and safety, neighborhood, and neighborhoods and community. The next step for this is to host youth-focused groups facilitated by our fellow youth commissioners to be held this Thursday, April 24th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Adams City High School, and also Wednesday, April 30th, from 3:00 to 5:00 at Prairie View High School. Our next steps in March to June, like I said before, we will schedule and host focus groups. In July and September, we will consolidate information into a draft plan. September through November, review with the stakeholders. In November, finalize our youth master plan, and in December, present again to city council. So we'll be able to come again and hopefully present to you and have a little meeting again. It's quite a big project to handle, but since we've increased our ordinance, we have a lot of new members willing and eager, and as Juan stated before, they're very remarkable people who are willing to change the way youth are perceived and our engagement within the city. We amended an ordinance to state an increase of membership. We held recruitment, a recruitment campaign during December last year and January this year of 2014. New members had their first meeting on March 6th, and now, at this time, I would like them to be recognized as well. So if I could please have my founding members, who were not previously recognized before for attending Washington, D.C. trip, to stand and be recognized, followed by our new members. They'll state their name, grade, and their school.
Come on up to the podium.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Elaine Schubert, and I'm a ninth grader currently at Prairie View High School.
Hello, my name is Drake Collenbeck, and I go to Prairie View High School. I am a sophomore. And Renee suggested that I show you a patch I made on my Lederman's jacket.
Nice. I like it.
Thank you for the opportunity for me to be able to do this.
Hello, I am Victoria Perez, a ninth grader who is currently attending Prairie View High School, and I would like to thank you for encouraging and supporting our youth commission.
Good evening. My name is Enmaal Singh, and I'm currently a freshman at York International.
Good evening. I'm a new member to the youth commission, and I'm currently a freshman at Prairie View High School, and my name's Austin Acini.
Hello, I'm a new member as well, and I am a junior at Adams City High School. My name's Anna Ruiz.
Oh, hello. My name is Megan McKay, and I'm a junior at Prairie View High School, and I'm also a new member.
We also plan to recruit more members this year when the school year begins. One last time, I know I said it a lot, but we really do want to thank you and express our gratitude for being, for your extended support and for always being here for us when we need you. Renee and JD, Councilman Bullock and Councilwoman Carson, we'd like to thank you for continuing to dedicate your time to the Youth Commission and attending our meetings and giving us positive support and feedback. Also, Amador, Councilman Amador, thank you for your support when we were in Washington DC and for motivating the youth and inspiring us to be better people and strive for more opportunities. And once again, our Youth Coordinator, Julia Emco, and Michelle Hollstead, they were great chaperones. And finally, all the parents who allowed their children to go off to DC, and my parents in particular, because they're very skeptical. Thank you for your time. That's all I have for you today, and I hope to see you guys again and maybe make another presentation, but I'll now accept any questions that you all have, and thank you again for allowing me to present today.
Sure. Thank you very much for all of you coming in tonight. You need me for something there? Mr. Bullock? Oh, who wants me to ask you where you're going to college?
Oh, I'm going to Metro State University.
Good. So I guess everybody at home and here in the audience can see that the future of Commerce City is in good hands because we have young people learning about how to make law and how to take care of a community. And I want to make sure that you all understand, there's more opportunities for the Youth Commission. Any of you can shadow any of us at any time. And I know you mentioned that you got to go meet some real politicians in Washington.
Hey, hey!
I wanted to let you know. There are a couple sitting up here. Mr. Bullock and Mr. Douglas are two real politicians. So you don't have to go far. The rest of us, I can't quite say that, but there are a couple up here. I think, I think it's great that you all are involved, and I love how diverse the group is. I think it's, it makes a statement for our community, and I'd love to see you more involved. And if any of you wanted that opportunity to shadow any of us, I would certainly open up myself to allow that to happen. Given the travesty that took place with some of the Adams City High School students at this last horrific car accident that took place, there may be some room for you to be leaders at school. I know all of you are already, but to help with maybe an alcohol awareness program or something of that nature. We hate to see the potential of these young children lose their lives or get harmed in those type of events when they could be doing something a little more productive. But it's great that you all got the chance to go out, and I'll share one thing with you. On my first trip to Washington, as a council member back in 88, 89, somewhere right in there, no, 90, I think it was 90. I don't know, it's been so long ago. When I was, my first year as a council member, I got to go to Washington DC. And 2000, was it 2000?
Yeah.
I don't remember. There's been too many of these meetings. So anyhow, my first trip to Washington DC, I had no clue what to expect, and the first day, we went to the Capitol, and we had the opportunity to go up and stand out on the Senate balcony of the Capitol, which overlooks all of the steps of the Capitol. And I was impressed. I thought, this is, this is great. Well, here I am in a white Don Johnson sport coat and cowboy boots, and I stepped out on the balcony, and everybody started waving at me and taking pictures, and I know they thought President Fox was in town, but it was just me. Everybody probably went home and said, oh, my God, we got to see somebody from another country was there at the Capitol. But I could tell you, all the years since, I have never worn a white sport coat and cowboy boots to DC. It just doesn't quite fit in right, and I have a lot of great memories of Washington, not only just of the impacts we've made for our community by going and lobbying for the residents of this community, but one year, President Reagan was in rest underneath of the dome of the Capitol in the basement there, and I did get to observe President Reagan's casket in rest for those so many days that they're allowed to be there. But, but things that change your life. And what I would ask of all of you is to go back and share those history pieces that you learned in Washington with the rest of your student bodies at whatever schools you attend, because I didn't think much of history when I was in high school. Dave Rolle, who's now a school board member, was my history teacher, and he'll tell you, I slept through history. I think I had to do it twice, but I did graduate. And with that said, I learned more about US history in the one trip to Washington DC than I could have in four years of high school, and I know all of you probably got to see how that works as well. It does make an impact on you, and we're really proud to have good, positive, young people in our community that have a desire to be leaders and drive our community forward. So thank you all very much for participating.
Thank you.
Now, I think there's some council members that have a few words they'd like to say. Mr. Amador?
Thank you, Abby, Juan, the founding members of the Youth Commission. I did take the opportunity in Washington DC to engage with the five members that were there. Our days were definitely packed during the day with activities and workshops, but then also in the evening, at night, we took the opportunity to explore the city, which was definitely a lot of walking. I've also had the opportunity to interview some of the new members as well, and there's just a great wealth of information and talent in this crowd right here, so I want to say thank you. Wherever your education takes you, please always remember, and you always will, your first trip to DC, take advantage of your education, and wherever you end up, whether you make it back to Commerce City or you end up somewhere else in the world, give back and just give of yourself, and I see that happening with all of you in this crowd. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two key pieces I wanted to speak to from the comments made. One was the recognition of how tangible the opportunity is to be involved, to meet our elected officials. I still have that same sort of giddiness sometimes when we interact, and you realize that you are on a first-name basis with an elected official that represents our entire state, represents our region, and I think it's a, it's a really neat thing for us to realize and you to realize and to share with your friends and family that the process that we often think of as being so far away in DC exists right here, and it exists in every city and town in this state and in this nation. You are involved if you choose to be involved. You don't have to sit on the sidelines and watch. The process is by the people and for the people, and I think it's very important, and it's a fantastic, fantastically exciting to see you all choosing to be engaged. And it begins with little things, and I think this is the second part I want to speak to. Your comments that what the Youth Commission does isn't quite as big as what the City Council does, and I would actually say that's just the opposite. I think what you guys are doing is actually much more important than what we're doing because you are setting the foundation for your peers, and you're sowing the seeds of leadership with your peers and showing them by your example, again, that ability to be engaged. There is such a lack of engagement, frankly, in the world today, and I think I could look up and down the dais, and my peers would recognize that same challenge. It's tough to get people into the process. It's tough to get people engaged, and for you to take those early steps and hopefully help perpetuate that, that desire to be involved and to help influence the world. You know, there's a, there's a saying that I keep on my desk, and it says, the best way to face the future is to build it. And I think it's really important that we all remember that we all have a hand in shaping that future. So thank you all for your commitment to this. Best of luck to the graduating seniors as you head off to school this fall. There is a wide, great world out there that awaits you. Keep your head down, and as Mr. Amador said, wherever you go, stay involved and don't sit on the sideline.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you so much for such a great presentation. I do want to admit, I'm truly pleased with the enthusiasm and willingness to learn. It's very refreshing to see all the excitement in this room, and so I just want to commend you on your participation. I look forward to many great things coming from the Commission, and for those that are graduating, this may be just a stepping stone into what you're doing in your future, what you're planning in your future, but within the short period of time that the Commission has been formed, I have seen so many positive and wonderful things coming from the Commission. So wish you well to all the seniors and look forward to great things happening.
Thank you.
Councilman Douglas?
Thank you, Abby, and to all the Youth Commission. You guys were very great in DC as far as supporting the youth for Commerce City, and you guys are the voice of the youth, and I want to commend you for that because it takes a lot to step up and take in that leadership role. You guys are going to be great leaders wherever you end up, and maybe take in our seats one day, or even take one of these gentleman's seats down there as our city attorney. So I just want to thank you guys, and I appreciate all the effort and for all you've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bullock, you were waiting for the end or what?
No, I just, I'm.
Oh, that's all right. Yeah, I was done. So, Mr. Bullock?
Yes, I, you probably don't know this, but Sam Mamet from CML came by to congratulate our Youth Commission, and he had just high praise for our Youth Commission in Washington DC, and he wished he could have been here, but he didn't know we had an executive session beforehand. But in his comments before the meeting tonight, he just had nothing but praise for our Youth Commission and how they conducted themselves and how professionally, professional they were in Washington DC. So it's not just you talking to us, it's you talking to the whole state because there's a lot of people out there that saw you and were very impressed by you. And I can surely say that every time I go to a meeting with you and everything, I'm impressed by the professionalism and the knowledge of our Youth Commission. And I know that as it goes on, it's just going to get better and better because the people that will be standing on your shoulders are only going to, learn from you and become better for what you did to create this. So thank you.
Now, Councilwoman Carson?
One point that Mr. Bullock left out was Sam Mamet said he does get calls from other cities. I think I heard it from.
Wanting to get a better understanding of how to form a Youth Commission, and lots of questions, and he uses us as an example. He says call Commerce City because they have a great Youth Commission. So thank you, because you guys really have represented the city in the highest manner that, honestly, Mr. Bullock and I just sat back like proud parents. But I want to thank you for your passion and commitment to the city and to the youth of the city. You guys have made such a positive impact on our city in such a short period of time. Abby, you made the comment after your Random Acts of Kindness Week that you really could see the difference in your entire school.
Yeah.
You can't measure that. When, when you guys can set out there with a one-week campaign and actually change the way that your fellow students are treating each other and going about their day, honestly, you should all be very proud. I don't know, I just can't thank you guys for representing the city to the degree that you did when you were in DC. Thank you so much. The next thing I want to do is I want to thank council because it's this council that is seated here that saw the need and the desire to support the youth in Commerce City, so thank you very much. It's not anything anybody will regret, will regret. And then, Julia, you've done a great job, Michelle, and parents, thank you. I always say, if you give our youth something, they will get involved, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, JD. I think it's important that we do also recognize Julia Emco and Michelle Hollstead as your liaisons or our liaisons to you. Without them, it would be very tough for us to have that connection with the youth that we have from a day-to-day basis, so thanks for the efforts that you all put into it. And I know you're enjoying it, too, because they had to be a lot of fun to be around out in Washington. Nobody getting in any trouble, and I didn't have to worry about any phone calls. You did miss your plane. I heard about that, but you know, that's probably a good experience for you to have. It's something that normally happens on this, the day-to-day travel that you all are taking part in now. You have to get used to missing a plane now and then, but you're doing a great job, and Commerce City has something great to look forward to as you all grow up and help lead this community. So thank you very much. We're going to come down front and take a picture with all of you, but we're very proud of you and the efforts you're making in your community, so thank you.
Thank you.
So it's supposed to bring up the missing of the plane. So. All right. All right, I'll allow for a short break for anybody that doesn't want to have to sit through the rest of the meeting, because I know all of you have school, and you may want to leave, but you're more than welcome to stay as well. So if anybody wants to leave, now's a good time.
Okay, I'll see you.
See ya. Mr. Mayor Proten, your excuse.
So you push it when the light goes off, then it's on?
Okay.
Agenda. We're going to have a presentation from the Historical Society. I'd like to invite Deborah Bullock forward to the podium to make her presentation. Welcome. Turn that on, I don't think it's on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Deborah Bullock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street, and I'm actually going to sit at the table. and I'm actually going to sit at the table. So, I'm going to go over there. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your support of the Historical Society. And we're here tonight just to give you an update on what we're doing in the Historical Society. As you know, we established in 2009, and we were founded from an organization called... We were founded in August 21st, 2009, and our Articles of Incorporation were completed and signed in November of 2009. Our bylaws were created and signed on November 20th, 2009, and we applied for our 501(c)(3) status and officially received it in February of 2010. Our mission is to preserve the history of Commerce City. And our primary purpose is to have a museum where we can collect and preserve the past and present history of Commerce City, and to disseminate information, to raise interest in the history of the area, to encourage the preservation of historic buildings, to provide exhibits and preserve our local history, and to have a museum. Our goals that we've established for 2014 are to try to have a museum by June, to establish a welcome center by June, and to apply for our Historic District for the Derby Diamond, and to complete the Master Preservation Plan with the city by December 2014, and to create a virtual museum starting in 2014 in June. Currently, we have 136 members. Twenty-seven of those are founding members, and some of you sitting on the dais tonight are founding members. We have 52 individual, 33 family, and four businesses, five lifetime senior, three lifetime members, and we have eight in memory of, and we have four comp members. Our publications include our Facebook account. We have our website. We have our email address and our newsletters. And you have a newsletter, our most recent one that you have now. And so, I just want to recap what we did in 2013. We received the Hilo sign, and now that is placed with "Save a Lot." But we actually have the, we don't have that big sign. We just have the letters off of it. And we have that in storage. We attended the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District building dedication for the Stevenson Administration Building, and we did a video on that. And we started meeting with the city planners for the Derby master plan, Historic Master Plan. And in January, they started the demolition for the dog track. And we took pictures all through that process. And as you know, we took items out of there. On the bottom right was the last structure standing, and that was the safe that was in the center of the dog track. And I think the demolition crew are the ones that ended up with that. In February of 2013, we received a Quality Community Foundation grant, and we had our annual meeting on February 17th. In March, we had a, we developed a Key Bank display case about the history of Key Bank. The first one we did was the history of the mayor's in Commerce City, and this was our second one, which is still up there. I actually wanted to do a new display, and they want to keep the history of the bank in there. So, it's still there. And the City of Commerce City hosted their Historic Preservation Plan Open House, which you see on the bottom left there. In April of 2013, we had our coloring book distribution. And on the top are all of the beacons and the sentinels and the gateways that we are binding. So, they're in hard format for the history of Commerce City for those years. And we received on the bottom left a scrapbook from Bill Lee from the Mile High Kennel Club. I think most of you know who Bill Lee is. He worked at the dog track for 50 years. And when they closed the dog track in 2008, they loaded up this U-Haul trailer and took it to Kansas City, Missouri, where the National Museum of Dog Track, what is it, June? National Museum of Dog Track History, something like that. And when we started our Historical Society here, Bill is pretty active with us. And he actually drove back there and got these scrapbooks. And there's probably seven of them, and they're about three feet in diameter of the whole history of the dog track. So, that was pretty cool. So, we have those. In May, we had a plant and garage sale, and we had our From Time to Time Luncheon, which is our annual awards luncheon that we have, and we're going to have that this next Sunday. And our coloring contest winners came to council, and we presented the awards to them with the cultural council. And we participated in the Memorial Day Parade, and we did a trip to Central City on May 19th. And in June, we had a roller derby fundraiser on June 2nd. Our easiest fundraiser we've had. All we did was show up and collect money. It was fun. We just, we got the money for the door, and that's what we had to do. So, it was a pretty good fundraiser. And that was at the Wagon Wheel in Brighton. We hosted a senior lunch at Adams 14, about the Adams 14 School History, and took a tour of all the school sites in the city. And we recorded the Adams City High School demolition, and we also retrieved items out of the high school. We hosted a table at the Neighborhood Outreach at River Run Park, and we received a donation from McDonald's Grand Opening. In July, we received our first check from the State Historical Fund for our survey in Derby. And we hosted a Derby Outreach at Key Bank for that project. And we had a work day at Dottie Baki's house. You can see the firemen stopped by to help us cut limbs, and the youth commission came and helped rake leaves and cut leaves or cut branches. And it was a long day, but it was a lot of fun. Dottie Baki's house is the oldest house in Commerce City. It was built in 1892, and it, she always needs help doing things. So, we organized that event. We hosted our Derby Days table, and we hosted a table at the Commerce City Outreach at Fairfax Park on August 8th. And we hold a Victorian Tea at Dottie Baki's house in August of every year. We submitted an application for saving places for the Dottie Baki House and the Quonset Hut Village. However, we were not selected, but we did turn that in. We received a grant from Key Bank. We hosted a table at Back to School Night at Adams City High School to try to get the Adams City High School History Club started. And we received our first notification of a possible Conter Building use for a museum. In September, we hosted a table at the South Adams County Volunteer Fire Department spaghetti dinner. We participated in the Adams City High School Homecoming Parade. We hosted our Sixth Annual Pioneer Picnic, and we established the High School History Club at Adams City High School. In September, we participated in this mural at Wells Fargo Bank. They actually contacted us to supply the history and the pictures. And if you've been in Wells Fargo, over on Parkway Drive, you'll see these murals up in their windows, and it's the history of Commerce City. In October, we had our bricks sale from bricks from the high school. And on the bottom left, you see those little jars. We decided we needed to keep selling bricks. So, we put these little bricks, we smashed the bricks, put them in jars, and there's a picture of the high school on the back and a picture of the Historical Society on the front. And they're not edible. And then, we had our, another senior history tour at the Recreation Center, and it was the trout farm history that Bob Hutchings put together. And it was a very good history of all the trout farms that were once in, most of them in the Commerce City area. We participated in the craft fair at our Savior Lutheran Church. We participated in the Adams City High School Quarterback Club Goody Bag Giveaway. And our, some of our volunteers helped bag candy for the Creepy Hollows event at City Hall. And those are some pictures from that. There's still a couple trout farms in the state, and this one on the bottom right was up in Boulder. And this is, you know, an individually-owned trout farm. It's not estate-owned. And so, we went there as part of our tour. In November, we did basket and wreaths workshops. We did a Central Bus Trip on November 3rd. We delivered coloring books to Monaco Elementary. We do have some schools that are asking us to come at different times because it goes, it coincides with the history that they're doing at their school. And so, we had two schools did that. They did that this year, and Monaco was one of them. We created our 2014 calendar. We continue, continued having meetings with the Commerce City Planning Department for the Master History Preservation Plan, and we participated in the Adams County Museum Christmas Celebration at the Adams County Museum. December, we participated in the Derby Winter Festival. We did a table at the Santa Event that's sponsored by the Commerce City Business and Professional Association at the Catholic Church, and we had our annual Christmas Lights Bus Tour. And currently, we have exhibits at Metropolitan State Bank, at Hilo Check Cashing, and at Hilo Check Cashing, next to where Old Hilo used to be. And we are working on the Derby Survey. We're continuing to do that. And we have our Adams City High School History Club that June and Esther meet with every week. And they've started, they reinstated the Eagle Eye. They help with some of our events. They go on tours of the city to learn some of the history. And we're still continuing with the Historic Preservation Plan with the, with Steve Timms, Chris Kramer, and Paul Workman from the Planning Department. And we have completed this year probably 40 videos, and I'm not going to read them all, but those are all listed there. And we work closely with some of the associations within the city, the Commerce City Business and Professional Association, the Adams County Historical Society, Westminster Historical Society, Friends of the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuges, City of Commerce City Council and Planning Department, Community Enterprise, South Adams County Water and Sanitation, South Adams Fire Department, Adams 14 School District, Brighton 27J School District, South Adams Women's Association, the Union Adams City High School Alumni Association, and the Commerce City Cultural Council. Commerce City Business and Professional Association, Westminster Historical Society, our Savior Lutheran Church, and Historic Denver, and Key Bank. We raise funds through our membership dues, through the programs. We do have quite a few fundraising programs, and that's really where we raise most of our money. We have some events. We have grants. We get individual contributions. And we have received quite a few memorial contributions this year from families that if their members pass away, they, their donations go to the Historical Society. We also sell items. We have calendars. We have bricks. We have crafts. We have books. We have shirts. We have other events, which is our, which are the annual events that we do, the Time to Time Luncheon, the Victorian Tea, our bus trips, the Light, the Christmas Lights Bus Tour, the Pioneer Picnic, Brick Sales, Santa Christmas with CCBPA, and the Coloring Book. I'd like to introduce our board members. Joanne Stevenson is here tonight. She's our president. Esther Hall is here tonight, and she's our vice president. June Younger is here. She's our historian. She's over there taking the video. And Thelma Cole is out of town, so she wasn't able to be here. We have a lot of volunteers. In 2013, we logged over 3,500 hours in volunteers. So, we would like to thank you for your continued support of Commerce City and the Historical Society. And I'd like to introduce Chris and Tim Hohn. They are the ones with Hohn Architects that have been doing the survey in Derby, and they want to tell us a little bit about what they have found in Derby.
Come on up to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to talk about history tonight.
Okay, hold on. I got it.
We've really enjoyed working with the Commerce City Historical Society. We are working on an architectural and historical survey of the Derby Diamond. And we are, this project is funded through the Colorado Historical Society. And as you know, the Derby Diamond is defined by, it's a triangle. Highway 2 is located along the diagonal or the hypotenuse of the triangle. And then, East 72nd Avenue is the southern boundary, and Magnolia is the eastern boundary. So, we are actually doing a survey of about 60 buildings that are within this triangular area. And they consist of both commercial and residential buildings. We are filling out forms that are provided by the Colorado Historical Society. About 90% of the buildings are getting what is called a reconnaissance survey, and then the other 10% are, we're doing an intensive level survey. And so, what I wanted to tell you about tonight, Tim and I have been working on the project for quite a while now, and we've developed, we're going to be talking about the historic context, which we recently developed and submitted to the Colorado Historical Society. And within the historic context of Derby, there are actually six time periods. The first one is the arrival of the railroad. And that occurred between 1862 and 1889. And then, the next significant time period was the founding of Derby, and that's between the dates of 1889 and 1910. We then went to early Derby. We're going to be talking about each of these sections a little bit, but I just wanted to summarize them for you. But the third significant period is early Derby. That's from 1910 to 1941. Then, the Rocky Mountain Arsenal became an important part of the history of Derby, and that occurred between 1942 and 1946. And then, we found that, you know, a lot of the buildings in Derby were built following World War II. So, there's another time period of 1947 to 1975. And then, the final significant time period is Derby After the Building Boom, which is in 1976 to the present. So, Tim is going to start out, and we're kind of giving you the Reader's Digest condensed version tonight of this portion of our report. But Tim will first start talking about the arrival of the railroad.
Okay. And we'll just go through this on a timeline basis. There were two legislative acts that were catalysts for Western development in 1862. One was the Pacific Railroad Act, which allowed for the construction of the Transcontinental Railroad, and also in the same year, the Homestead Act, which allowed people to obtain 160 acres of land if they were willing to live on it for five years and erect a structure and grow crops on it. And these were both signed into legislation by President Lincoln. The railroads benefited from the act by offering their excess land to homesteaders at inflated prices, especially adjacent to railway stations, since farmers and ranchers considered this land most valuable. And the railroads really had worked out a fantastic deal with the government because for every mile of track they laid, they were granted 10 square miles of land adjacent to the railway. So, all told, there were 100, they owned 175 million acres of land after they had completed the railway system, which was equivalent to a land area larger than the state of Texas. So, they had all this land, and they, and they weren't just in the transportation business. They were in the development business. They were going to sell this land to homesteaders and, you know, provide the transportation to and from this new land that they've, that they were selling. So, in 1869, seven years after the Pacific Railroad Act was passed, the Transcontinental Railroad was complete. Unfortunately, it ran through Cheyenne, Wyoming. There was no direct link to Denver. So, in 1870, a spur line from Cheyenne down to Denver was completed, and that was called the Denver Pacific Railroad. In the same... Railroad. And also, in this, on the same year, the Homestead Act, which allowed people to obtain a hundred and sixty acres of land if they were willing to live on it for five years and erect a structure and, and grow crops on it. And these were both signed into legislation by President Lincoln. The railroads benefited from the act by offering their excess land to homesteaders at inflated prices, especially adjacent to railway stations, since farmers and ranchers considered this land most valuable. And the railroads really had worked out a fantastic deal with the government because for every mile of track they laid, they were granted ten square miles of land adjacent to the railway. So all told, there were a hundred, they owned a hundred and seventy-five million acres of land after they had completed the railway system, which was equivalent to a, to a land area larger than the state of Texas. So they had all this land, and they, and they weren't just in the transportation business, they were in the development business. They were going to sell this land to homesteaders and, you know, provide the transportation to and from this new land that they've, that they were selling. So in 1869, seven years after the Pacific Railroad Act was passed, the Transcontinental Railroad was complete. Unfortunately, it ran through Cheyenne, Wyoming. There was no direct link to Denver. So in 1870, a spur line from Cheyenne down to Denver was completed, and that was called the Denver Pacific Railroad. In the same year, the Kansas Pacific Railroad also completed a line from Kansas City to Denver off the Transcontinental Line. But it wasn't until 1882 that the Chicago Burlington and Quincy Railroad provided a direct line from, from Chicago to Denver. Now, the CB&amp;Q Railroad was, was considered a Granger Railroad. What they did is they had a, they had a subsidiary company called the Lincoln Land Company. It was, it was incorporated in Lincoln, Nebraska, which was, and that was incorporated in 1880. And the purpose of this was purchasing and selling real estate, as well as plating towns in Nebraska, South Dakota, Kansas, Wyoming, Montana, and Colorado. And so in 1880, they started out in Lincoln, Nebraska, and slowly built, built their line, eventually reaching Denver in eighteen eighty, eighteen eighty, eighty-two. Yes. And what they would do is they would plat towns typically seven to ten miles apart so that the farmers who owned land near the railroads right of way were within a day's travel of the depot and trading center. And then following the plating of a town, the railroad would typically dig a community well and build a depot. In 1889, they, they reached Derby, and the town of Derby was surveyed and record, I'm sorry, the town of, the town of Derby was surveyed and recorded in 1889. And we have a map showing.
Which page?
It's on page three, I believe. You can zoom in on that. We'll show you the.
How do I go back on this? Is that going back or forward?
It's, it's right near the beginning.
That's going forward. Hold on.
Oops, you're going back. Whoops.
I want to go to the beginning.
Grab this.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
It's, it's the next, the next blow-up map.
Is that one?
Yes, the one, the one below.
Right there on page three.
Right there?
Yeah, can you zoom in on that a little bit?
That one?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yeah, if you can zoom in.
I can't.
Well, hit the plus right up there.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Oops. Okay. There you go. Is that it?
No, well, that's, that's, that's the big, that's all of Colorado in that picture, but.
Which one?
The one below?
Yeah, the one below.
Oh, the one below, okay. There we go.
There we go. So this is the line, this is, this is, the red dot shows the Kansas State Line. And all these, all these little towns along this route to Denver were all founded by the Lincoln Land Company, including Akron, Brush, Yuma, Eckley, Ray, Fort Morgan. And right there at the very end, the last stop before we got to Denver is Derby. So in 1889, if you can turn, if you can advance it to page six now, Debra.
That's three.
That's the, there we go, right there. So this was the plat of, of Derby. The typical block was three hundred feet square. The typical lots were twenty-five feet wide by a hundred and fifty feet deep, a little bit bigger than the ones in Denver. And in July, the Lincoln Land Company and a man named George McCullough, who was a real, who was a realtor and a real estate developer, deeded the center part of the, of the land there to the, to the CB&amp;Q Railroad for, you know, for their use. And they also agreed to build a depot building, which was supposed to be completed by January of 1890. In eighteen ninety, in eighteen ninety-one, so it's been two years now since this, this started, in eighteen ninety-one, they'd sold a grand total of zero lots. And the problem with that was because they didn't have any water. They had a real problem getting water. Consequently, the Lincoln Land Company and George McCullough called for the survey and plat of numerous lots and roads to be vacated. So what they did is they reduced the size of Derby down to the area that's shown in green. About eighty-five percent of the plat was just vacated and abandoned. And again, the, the boundaries are the Seventy-Second Avenue on the bottom, Seventy-Fourth Avenue on the top, Magnolia Street on the east side, and Chremaria Street on the west side. Okay, so things kind of languished for quite a while because there wasn't any water. In 1904, the president of the Lincoln Land Company was presented with a subscription paper in Denver requesting donations to be used for the boring of a well with a depth of thirty-five hundred feet. And presumably, that, that was, that was successful because in 1911, seven year, or yeah, seven years later, a well had been bored on a five-acre tract owned by the Lincoln Land Company just east of town. We found an undated contract in our research, and it called for a reinforced concrete tank measuring sixteen feet square and eight feet high, which suggests that it was used to store potable water, well water for the, just for distribution to the residents of Derby. So apparently, that, that was successful. So that's, that's the end of that section.
So moving on to the next time period of early Derby, that's from 1910 to 1941. As you probably know, living in Adams County, farming was the primary occupation of early settlers in the area. The Lincoln Land Company and George McCullough recognized that plating individual five-acre tracts of land for small farms would helps for development in the town of Derby. So Derby Gardens was platted in 1910, and maybe some of you are familiar with that. That's located east of the town of Derby. And so, Debra, if you don't mind, if you could move forward to page nine. And this is page, let's see, seven. I just wanted to show you, we found this advertisement for Altera Farms. These were, these people were competitors to George McCullough and the Lincoln Land Company, but you can see that they were selling five, ten, and twenty acre tracts of land. And they showed in this advertisement, the Derby Depot and a typical farm near Derby. So, you know, Derby was well-known at that time. So although Derby's railroad depot allowed residents to commute to jobs and provided farmers access to markets in Denver, the dealt, the development of the town was slow to start. The Lincoln Land Company began selling lots in the town of Derby circa 1910. So there was quite a, you know, a lag in time between the time when the town was originally founded and when they started selling lots. The earliest business directory listing for Derby occurred in 1911, when the town had a population of thirty. The first store in Derby was established by Tipton and Pearl Brewery in 1912. A lumberyard owned by J.H. Peterson was constructed in Derby in 1913, near the Derby, the Brewer's Store and close to the railroad depot. In 1920, the business was sold and became known as the Derby Lumber Company, and that building still exists today. And Debra, if we could go to page fifteen, I can show them a photograph that we found from the Stephen Hart Library at History Colorado. And this photograph is right here, and you can see, this photograph was taken in the early nineteen forties. We're looking along Highway Two towards what is now Locust. But you can see the old railroad depot there on the right side of the photograph. The Colorado Power Company installed electric lights in the community in 1923. And by 1930, the population had grown to three hundred, and new businesses had been established, including a garage, an auto filling station, a pool hall, and a marmalade company. The community church provided worship services. Then the USGS map, which is on page seventeen, shows that there were approximately twenty-five structures recorded in the town of Derby. So you can see, this is the first USGS map of Derby from 1938. And then in 1940, the population was recorded at six hundred. So then the next time period is Derby and the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. That's from 1942 to 1946. The Rocky Mountain Arsenal had a significant impact on Derby because it provided employment for many people that lived in Derby. And then I just want to go through, talking about the Derby's growth following World War II, which is what we see mostly in the town of Derby now. The buildings there represent that time period. There were, you know, there was the GI Bill, which really helps for residential development. And then automobile manufacturing plants were restructured for the, they shifted back to automobile production following World War II. And so we see a lot of people moving out to the suburbs. We see a lot of new shopping centers and grocery stores with parking lots to accommodate these cars. And Debra had shown a photo on page twenty-one, which is the HiLo Market in our district. And so there were a lot of buildings constructed during this time period. We also see on the next page, Debra, the Patty Lee Subdivision, which is in the northwest corner of Derby. And this subdivision was built in 1955. The most significant aspect of the development of Derby occurred when the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District was established and water lines were installed in 1953 with sewer lines following in 1957. And then, of course, we know that in 1962, Commerce Town voted to annex the town of Derby. And so the population of Commerce Town rose from four thousand to over sixteen thousand people, and the town was renamed Commerce City. So I'm just trying to go through this pretty quickly because I know we're running out of time here. Tim's just going to talk a little bit about Derby after the building boom, and then we'll wrap everything up for you. But we do plan on giving another presentation when we have the project completed, and we'll be able to devote more time to the presentation.
And we'll be able to present our findings of what we, you know, of all the research we've done. So, okay, this is, the next, next section here is Derby after the building boom, which is from 1976 to the present. And by 1969, the Rocky Mountain Arsenal was the focus of controversy because of the opposition to the Vietnam War and concerns about pollution from the, from the weapons that were being created there. And so after 1970, the demilitarization of chemical weapons became the arsenal's primary mission. In 1982, by 1982, all production at the facility ended, and the task of removing pollutants began. And at this point, all the employment opportunities at the Rocky Mountain Arsenal were, were no longer available. So the building boom that Derby experienced during its years following World War II ended when the Rocky Mountain Arsenal ceased its operations, and new commercial development occurred south of town. As a result of this, many merchants moved out of the area, leaving many buildings vacant. Since, after that happened, a series of revitalization, revitalization studies were performed, one in 1976, one in 1985, and the most recent one in 2005 to 2006. All of these studies recognized Derby's potential competitive advantage with other retail centers through strategic planning, physical improvements, and target marketing. In 1985, the University, University of Colorado's College of Design and Planning assisted the city then in developing a preliminary revitalization plan for the merchants. And primary deficiencies identified at that time included the need to develop a better identity for the area, main entry points needed to be made more significant, there was a need to improve the continuity and linkages between the buildings within the district, especially considering that there were some empty, empty lots. Also, secondary issues included inconsistent facade signage and canopy treatments, a lack of lighting at night, landscaping issues, parking issues, and vacant and dilapidated buildings that required improvement or renewal, removal. The study team published a preliminary revitalization plan that included architectural design standards and signage guidelines. Fast forward to 2006, twenty years after this study, many of the recommendations have not been implemented yet. So new housing and commercial developments in northern Adams County were drawing residents from Derby, leaving an increased number of vacant and rental properties in the area. Some new consultants came in, and they were led by Dana Crawford and her, her company, and they found that Derby is ideally located to become a destination because it's close to downtown Denver, it's only a twelve-minute drive, it's twenty minutes from DIA, it's close to the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge, and it's also close to the Colorado Rapids Soccer Stadium. They, they had developed some design guideline goals. One was to reestablish Derby as a destination through elegant and cohesive landscaping, a friendlier pedestrian environment, and 24/7 activity, providing entry icons at strategic locations, better definition of the edge or perimeter of Derby, and using the nineteen fifties era as a unifying architectural foundation. So a lot of the same things that were discovered back in eighty-five, they still apply it even, even today. And then on page twenty-six, we have a, Debra, there's a picture on there that we wanted to show you. Yep, okay. So since 2005, several of the programs were implemented, including the revitalization of the Joe Riley Park, which is shown on the photograph there, and also the intersection improvements at Seventy-Second Place and Monaco Street, and also really just an upgrading of all the, all the streets within, you know, a couple hundred-foot radius of that area. So the revitalized, the revitalization of the town of Derby is indeed underway. Things have, things have happened so far, and things, things will happen in the future. So that's.
Anyway, that's our presentation. We thank the Commerce City Historical Society for giving us the opportunity to present this tonight. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there any questions?
Um, let me, let me go to the council. Ms. Carson, you have a question, comment? Your light's on. Mr. Amador?
Thank you for the history lesson. Tonight was a little unexpected, but thank you. I come from a long line of Commerce City residents and family that's grown up here for generations. So I can appreciate your study. And the Historical Society for all the engagement that you are doing on a month-to-month basis. I noticed, Chris, or Tim, that you referenced a study from 1995.
Eighty-five.
Sorry, eighty-five. And there was another study in ninety-five that I was a part of when I was an undergraduate. And so to see some of those things come to light, some of the things that have happened here are definitely enlightening. So thank you, and definitely for the Commerce City Historical Society. I see that you're always out there, all over the place, asking residents and businesses for their support in everything that you're doing. So it, it takes a lot to do that, so thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for coming in tonight. It was, it was great to hear some of the background. Several of us were born and raised here and, and got to see Derby. And it's what I consider its heyday, but maybe it was better before, but I didn't get to see it then. Mr. McAlton, did you have a comment? I saw your light flash.
Just, just real quickly, I appreciate your, the history lesson. As somebody who didn't grow up here, I think it's great to have the full context of the history of the place. Obviously, being able to view it in that historical context is, is really interesting for us, and I know will be of great value. I think the other thing that I, I zeroed in on a couple points is how history repeats itself, or how we fail to sort of take action at certain points in time, and we have to come back and, and address it again. So there's, there's great value in that for, for many reasons. Thank you very much. I look forward to the final product.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Great. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
And looks like Debra's doing the next presentation as well.
Oh, that's right.
So go ahead and just stay there. I don't want you to get up. We'll have an update on the Cultural Council.
Troy, it's gonna, okay. Let me find it.
I'll be right back. Okay, go ahead and click on that.
Okay, great, thanks. Troy? Are we on a break?
I currently have the privilege of serving as president of the Commerce City Cultural Council. I reside at 5409 61st Way. Please go on ahead. This will be my first time seeing this too, so it'll be fun for everyone. So the history of the cultural council, we were incorporated in 1991 by the city of Commerce, by city council members. The council went on hiatus between February 2009 and March 2010. I'm sure some of you remember some of those times. I've heard stories. I don't really want to know what happened. So we're just going to continue on as, as a new entity. We're going to continue on with nice, hopeful, bright, shiny faces, and we're going to do good work for the city. In 2010, reassessed goals and recruited new members. Since 2010, the council has collaborated with several other communities, organizations, and city departments to fulfill its purpose. Our mission statement is to advance charity and education for the preservation of art, music, theater, and dance in Commerce City. And to, to do this, and our purpose is to serve as cultural stewards and to advance cultural awareness and to provide cultural opportunities for people of all walks of life through community events to build stronger community and experience Commerce City in a positive way. Council students and staff, council representatives, we're very thankful to have councilperson JD Carlson and Crystal Elliott with us. We thank you for their participation. And we also want to thank Karen O'Donnell, our staff representative through Recreation Center. She's very helpful. She's a great, she's a great assist to us. Cultural council members, you have myself, my name's Troy Younger. I am president. Vice president is Agent Anderson. Secretary is Deborah Bullock. Jim Jacobs is treasurer. Mauro Neal, Tina Curtis, that should be Christina Curtis, Carlotta Barnes, Richie Castro, Vanessa Trujillo, Heidi McNeely. And it should also be mentioned, Mauro Neal and Jim Jacobs also serve on the Public Art Committee and have done a great, great deal of work in service to the community. Our accomplishments for 2013, Adams 14 Art Show, it's a great event. I'm glad it takes place just out here. You guys have been great, great hosts for the event and we thank you for it. The Public Art Master Plan, which was approved by you all in April of 2013, again, we thank you all for your participation and we thank you for the help of staff. It's a great-looking publication. It couldn't have been done without your help. Sponsored reception for Adams 14 Arts Fest Week. As a matter of fact, I just, I ran home from work, sliced some sandwiches, took them over there and then headed over here. They had a great response to the Art Fest Week this, this afternoon. There must have been three or 400 kids walking around in the little area in front of the theater. In May of 2013, we participated in the Memorial Day Parade. We participate with the Historical Society with the Coloring Book Project, and we show with the CCHS and provided prizes for the Coloring Book Contest. Music in the Park, I've seen many of you all at Music in the Park. It's a great night for this community. We thank you all for your help with it. And you can just not look at some of those people. We want to thank you. We hosted a table at Derby Days and various city outreaches. And public art selection Fairfax Park, you know, this is, this is one of our great achievements of 2014 so far. Artist Joshua Wiener did just some magnificent sculptures for us, and it's really the first jewel in what we hope is, is a great kind of city art plan. The pieces are called Determination. They are erected out at the redeveloped Fairfax Park. This is a great-looking site. Members recruited to represent the following areas: Commerce City Cultural Council. We would like to recruit more visual artists, department, agency representative, technical advisors, site representatives, community members, business representatives, architect and/or landscape architects. Community members: Barbara Neal, public art consultant. Mauro Neal, cultural council member and resident. Jim Jacobs, cultural council member and resident. Mike Brown, parks, planning, and operations manager, city department representative. Bill Newman, DHM Design, Landscape Architecture, Site Representative. Leisha Burnett, Suncor Business Representative. Larry Durlin, Visual Artist Representative and Resident. Jenny Oxmacher, City Planner, City Representative, Assistant in Creation of the Public Art Master Plan. Karen O'Donnell, Recreation Manager, City Department Representative. Grants and donations, we are very happy recipients of the Quality Community Foundation, Key Bank, SEFD Grant, the Commerce City Budget Contribution, which we thank you all for. Overall goals is to raise awareness about cultural council in the community, schools, and organizations, build a stronger community through cultural awareness, provide meaningful communication about cultural council events, develop a fundraising arm, develop a legacy and lasting contributions to the city. And our goals for 2014, we would like to expand the number of art shows we have, continue to brief city council on our accomplishments and plans, continue to develop relationships with other organizations. Recruitment of new members, we can have as many as 15. We currently have 15, so we'd like to perhaps have some members, I can't think of the word, forgive me, but have some members in reserve. We're going to continue with Music in the Park and try to use that as a way to market this community to the Denver metro area. Attend community outreaches, attend community events, secure funding, contract community building lease for cultural events, and more public art selections. And there's photos of the Determination dedication. Recommendations: April of 2013, the city council approved our Public Art Master Plan with the recommendations that are in it. Successful implementation of this Public Art Master Plan may require sustainable funding resources. At this time, cultural council would like to move forward with the following recommendations. These recommendations were approved by city council April of 2013. And as you'll see, those recommendations are part of the Public Art Master Plan. We would like to pursue a part-time administrator. The administrator may be tasked with overseeing the public art fund, distributing and collecting and collection of public art requests for proposals. Initiate with city council discussions about a percentage for public art program through CIP funding. We recommend that city council adopt by ordinance a standard for incorporation into the city's land development code. We would like to identify a process for establishing new themes for private development that are in accordance with this, with the Public Art Master Plan. Engage city council to discuss the allocation of public spaces as a new development requires. Cultural council, city council staff should discuss the adoption of potential ordinances to acquire public art fee in lieu from private development. And there's our contact info. You can contact me. I have contact information on the city's website and also on the Cultural Council Facebook website.
Thank you for the update. I know you guys do a, a great job and, and some of those events are, are really fun to go to, like the Music in the Park I personally like. But the art shows that you have here at City Hall are, are very interesting as well. Is there any questions or comments from the council as to the update from the cultural council? Seeing none. Thanks, Troy, for coming in.
Thank you.
I appreciate the update. Thank you, Troy. Next, we're going to have an update on the Quality Community Foundation from Daniel O'Leary. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Thank you for your time. I'll make it brief. Let me go ahead and start by introducing our members. Go have our present.
I'm Carol Taylor Boyd.
Is she good? Are you good?
I'm Joyce Sioyazi.
It's taken a minute.
Valerie Medina.
Carlotta Barnes.
Carlotta Barnes. We have Delilah Collins, who is not here, Leanna Noel, which is our administrative support, and Ryan Blake is not in attendance. Cheryl, she is back there. In 2013, our Quality Community Foundation program, we had three scholarships awarded. We had one four-year scholarship for $4,000, two $2,000 scholarships. In the lifetime of our program, we've had 29 scholarships awarded. Nine have graduated, including Valerie Medina, and five are currently enrolled right now. This is just an example of some of the nonprofits that we are currently working with right now. Little Giants Learning Center. In 2014, the Quality Community Foundation Grant Program, we had 29 applications that we received. We awarded 39 awards for a total of $123,500. The number of residents served, and these were direct residents that were served, because I think early on, there was a question of how many people we had served in our program this year. And what we did is, in, in the past, we have always took the number of people the nonprofits are serving, and that was our general line. But because of all the information that we're requesting from the nonprofits, now we can go and identify specifically how many people, because if a program serves 10,000 people, what part of that are we actually serving? And now with revitalizing our application process and asking more questions, we have been able to identify an, an exact number, and that'll be the process going forward. Direct services, 1,250. Youth and family members, 1,164. Food service, 1,716. Health and wellness, 2,081. And cultural events, 10,800. And here's just a snapshot of the nonprofits that we worked with and for the grants. It was just a couple, not even a month ago, when you were out here awarding their checks. Some of the things that we have done in the past two years is we have taught our nonprofits how to fish. That was a big concern was a lot of the nonprofits here in Commerce City, they depended on our scholar, our grant program, and they were not skilled enough to go out to receive other grants. So we have put in place our, the procedures that all grant administrators look for. But we also have brought them in. We host a one-day class. For the last three years, we have taught it, and it basically teaches them how to write their own, how to write a grant application. Okay? So we're calling it Teaching Them How to Fish: Grant Writing 101 Class. We also are working right now to offer grant, or to offer recreational program scholarship. This is something that we were, that we have never put in place up until this year. It became, it, we, it became aware that this is part of our program is to offer scholarships to the rec center, to students who can't afford programming or are not able to participate in city programs because of funding. So one of our main priorities for this year was to put together a few programs that would help, help this, help the youth out in Commerce City. Another picture of the Commerce City Youth Athletics that we granted. This year, we have toured Stout Street Foundation, and actually, this was a recommendation from Mayor Ford. When he first came in, he gave me a vision of what he wanted our program to look like. And I took a lot of that information and we put it in place. And this is actually an example of his recommendation, okay? So getting to know our, our nonprofits, other than just getting their, giving them a check once a year, we really didn't have a connection with those nonprofits. So we started going out to visit the nonprofits. I was at Stout Street a month ago. I took a, it was about a three-hour tour of their, their facility, and I would recommend that to anybody who's, who would love to. I mean, it's a great program. They're here in core Commerce City. It's a, they're great ambassadors for our city because of what they do for that, for the drug and alcohol community. So it's a great program. But Food Bank of the Rockies also. And then we have invited nonprofits to come out and, and talk to us about their programs in our board meetings. And so, so far, we have heard from Stout Street Foundation, Fish of Commerce City, Access Housing, Wishes for, for Wills, Commerce City Cultural or Historical Society, Commerce City Cultural Council, Little Giants Learning Center, and the Commerce City Youth Athletics. Upcoming events or, well, EdU Expo, we have, we had two members there two weeks ago, or two weeks ago? Talking to the, to the kids about our scholarship program, just informing them of what role we play in the community. We also have plans for the Memorial Day Parade. Glow-in-the-Dark 5K Dance Party coming up in June. Neighborhood Outreaches, which we have done for the past four years that I've been on the board. Fourth Fest in July, Derby Days, and Derby Winter Festival in December. Fundraising, scheduled events, we have a wine tasting and a silent auction on July 24th at Buffalo Run Golf Course. Potential events, we have the poker run, a restaurant night, and, and we're also working to bring back the golf tournament. We attend nonprofit events, volunteers to assist. I have also, I was invited to go meet with, where they had a, the Conference of Nonprofits here in, at the downtown, and I was invited to go to it. And I was actually able to talk to a lot of people about what we're doing here in Commerce City. A lot of the smaller nonprofits here in Commerce City, they don't have access to the big boys and the big boy funding. So I have made some connections and I'm hoping to bring some of that funding back to the city into some of the smaller nonprofits like Fish, some of our more community-based And then again, attend city events and foster foundation awareness. Do you have any questions for me?
Does the council have any questions for Daniel at this time? Mr. McAdonald?
Thanks very much, Mr. O'Leary, and the members of the board for coming tonight. I have to take my hat off to the efforts of this board, particularly over the last handful of years and the, the distance that you guys have come. Just to see your closing slide and the sort of next plateau that you guys are seeking is just really, really exciting. I think, I think back to where this program has been over the years and when we first put it into the hands of the community to really run and, and run with. And to see that the traction is there and that the, the energy is there. I think it's really exciting to hear about the work that you're, you talked about in terms of reaching out to the various nonprofits in the community and the relationship building and the helping to lift each other up and strengthen that, that network of really critical players in our community. I think the leadership that you guys are offering and the, the support is just fantastic. So hats off. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. O'Leary, I'd like to applaud you. You know, I did give you some, some ideas of how to try to encourage those particular nonprofits for you, you reach out to them, which you have, and be able to see what they do for our community and how they, how they help our community, because I think that's, that's the whole reason for the Quality Community Grant Program is what are those organizations that provide, whether it be food or, or services to residents of Commerce City, that without that service or food, would, would have a really hard time surviving in, in the community? And after going through and talking to some of these people, I'm sure you see that. and be able to see what they do for our community and how they help our community, because I think that's the whole reason for the Quality Community Grant Program, is what are those organizations that provide, whether it be food or services, to residents of Commerce City that without that service or food would have a really hard time surviving in the community? And after going through and talking to some of these people, I'm sure you see that. One of those being Stout Street, and I was kind of blown away. At first, you know, nobody wanted Stout Street to be here. It was one of those things, well, you know, we don't want this in our community. Those participants of Stout Street have to go out and actually help within our community. And so I'm constantly trying to give them different organizations that need help, whether it be a church that needs some landscaping done or what have you, sometimes they help at the Derby Winter Fest. But to go over and to actually go through their building and see what they do. Not all the people in there have ever, you know, not all of them have committed a crime. Some of them have just walked in to get some help. But it is truly a remarkable organization, and how they do business and get people turned around so that they could be, you know, participants within our community is, I think, rather amazing. And I would recommend to anybody to go and see the program that Stout Street has to offer. But it's not just Stout Street. It's many of these other nonprofits that do for our community. You know, one of the things that I like to do every year is go out and do the Meals on Wheels for mayors. There's a mayor's day, and I go out and deliver meals on wheels. And some of those seniors don't ever see another person the entire week other than the person delivering Meals on Wheels. And they rely on those services. And so when you get into the heart of what our nonprofits do and the people that they touch, you start being able to see which ones need the most help and which ones need some help. And that's really what I was imploring you to do, is to get out there and really see how they affect the community and so that they could be supported in the proper manner, and I'm glad that you guys are doing that. I really respect you all for serving on the board. I know it's not one of those glorious boards that, you know, you get to do the fun things like music in the park and some of the other things that you get to see with Cultural Council and Historical Society and some of these other things that are going on. But what you do matters as much or more to those people that need that loaf of bread or some vegetables or whatever it may be, or those services like Stout Street offers, or the youth athletics. Our kids wouldn't have those opportunities if it weren't for those programs. And the city cannot provide all of those type of programs. We rely upon those nonprofits. So don't ever sell yourself short on the duties that you do for this community. You are truly appreciated, and keep up the good work, because I'm really seeing a lot of new ambitions through the organization. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would like to also say thank you for your support. You know, we had some tough years the last couple of years. And right here is your future nonprofit in Commerce City, so thank you. You've done a great job.
Yep, thanks again. Okay, we'll move on in the agenda. Let me get my computer back on here. Next item is the Administrative Council business. And we do have a few items to take care of. We'll start with the I-70 Letter of Support. I need to ask the council if they have had an opportunity to review the letter and if they're prepared to authorize me to sign it. Steve? All right, Steve, you have a motion?
Motion to approve the letter from the mayor in support of I-70.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow my signature to go on the letter that has been prepared for the support of I-70. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, we have the Tiger Grant. Is there anyone on council prepared to make a motion to allow a vote authorizing me to sign the letter for the I-70 Tiger Grant? Mr. McAdonny?
I would move to recommend the mayor be authorized to sign the I-270 Tiger Grant letter.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow that signature. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And then, Mr. Douglas. There's one that's not on here. Now, yeah, I know, but did I get yours?
No.
Wasn't there one more?
Yes.
All right, would you please throw that one out there?
The council's approval for the mayor to send a letter stating no on the Senate Bill 14-181 that eliminates the use of red light cameras and photo speed radar.
Okay. So I've got a motion, is there a second? Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow a signature of mine to go on a support letter to support the red light camera, to vote for no on the red light camera legislation. Is there discussion before we move forward? Mr. McAdonny?
I am in full support of the letter, but I would like to suggest some specific content for inclusion. I think one of the things that I'd be interested in hearing from council on is that my understanding of the legislation as it sits right now is that it's sort of wraps around both red light and speed cameras in the same bill. And I think part of our language in support of this needs to separate the two, because I think there are very different aspects to the discussion. And our primary concern, our sole concern really, is red light and intersection safety, so... Perfect.
And I'll expand a little bit on that. As many of you know, myself, Mr. Douglas, and Mr. Bullock serve on the Legislative Committee. We did have an update tonight that Senator Yuliberry, who was a cautious yes, had put in for some amendments to be placed on the bill. Those amendments would include how we do business. It has to be reviewed by a police officer, that kind of thing. And they denied those amendments. Therefore, Senator Yuliberry is a no vote. It did pass through the Senate, and now we'll go to the House. However, we don't know what committee it's going to end up in. I have Michelle making her way up, who could expand if need be. But the red light camera letter is a letter that was drafted by Denver against the red light portion of the bill. Yeah, if you want.
Councilman McAdonny, members of council, this letter would be written, it's from CML, so every single jurisdiction would have a signature that uses the cameras, so it's a little bit more expansive.
Right, correct. All right, so I have a motion and a second, correct? No more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Now, I have one more, which is to allow us to be supportive of the... There it is. Mr. Bullock, why don't you make the motion? That way you've got it.
In the Legislative Committee tonight, we received a recommendation to send...
In the Legislative Committee tonight, we received a recommendation to send before council to allow the mayor and city council to support this upcoming legislation for the Home Ownership Opportunity Alliance, which is an upcoming bill that Senator Yuliberry is carrying forth. And it's basically a bill that deals with...
Construction defects.
Construction defects and everything. And so we're asking that our Metro Mayor is behind it, and our mayor and city council okay our mayor to sign on to this legislation, upcoming legislation, unless it gets changed so drastically that we can no longer support it.
And this is through the Metro Mayor's Association. It is Mayor Murphy that is really driving this bill. What this bill does is, right now, with the laws that are in place that come for construction of multifamily owner-occupied type of housing, condos and apartments, townhomes, nobody's building them in the metro area anymore because of the construction defect bill. This legislation would help fix that and bring back a market for owner-occupied multifamily units. So through the Metro Mayor's, I've been asked to sign on to their support for the bill. And I'm just coming to the council to ask them to allow me to sign on with the Metro Mayor's in support of the legislation. So with that, did I have a motion from you?
Yes.
Okay, and I have a second from Mr. McAdonny? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, is there any others before I move on to Administrative Council business? Mr. Amador?
Yes, thank you, council and Mr. Mayor. There is a letter in front of you. It's actually a form for the approval of both myself and my wife to attend the Boys and Girls Club Gala. It is an appropriate use of discretionary funds. She did grow up around the Boys and Girls Club, and so in going last year, it was a really good event. And I just request that for an approval to take her, because the event is over $350 for both of us to attend. So that is the request.
Now, I know myself and my wife will be attending that event as well and the Boys and Girls Club have sent over tickets for me. But is there any other council members that are using discretionary funds to go to the Boys and Girls Club event and will be taking your wife?
I won't be taking my wife.
Because I think that's the difference here, is because with Mr. Amador taking his wife, it puts it over the 300 mark. That's why he's bringing it to council. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Right.
That's correct there, Brian? Bob?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure before I needed to ask if anybody else needed to ask for a request, because that event, you know, multiple people are going to the event. I just didn't know if there's any others who are taking their wife other than myself. I won't be asking, because I did get the tickets sent over from the Boys and Girls Club for my attendance, so therefore I don't need to make the request. But on behalf of Mr. Amador, he has a request to utilize discretionary funds. I see you getting antsy over here, Brian. Is there something I'm not covering here?
Well, I haven't said anything all night. I thought I should say something.
Yeah, why don't you?
Did I hear correctly that Mr. Bullock would like to make a similar request?
No, Mr. Bullock will be going by himself, therefore he doesn't need to make that request. And I just wanted to make sure so we could handle it all at one time, if there was more than just Mr. Amador taking his wife. So if there be no one else taking their wife, and Mr. Amador needs to ask for permission to use discretionary funds to spend over $300 to attend that event, to the council, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Looks like you get to take your wife. All right. Is there any other Administrative Council business? Mr. Douglas?
Hi, yes, I have a request. At the intersection of 104th, sorry, Chambers and 104th, we have the cut sidewalks, and the cars are going a lot further into the intersection before they stop, because there is not a solid white line. So if you guys could look into that, just for safety reasons, because folks are using the intersection to get across the street, and cars are not stopping in the right area to allow the pedestrians to cross the street. Thank you.
Brian?
Mr. Mayor, I did have one item of Administrative Council business for council's consideration. City council had discussed in the past the idea of creating something like the Water Commission, but with the two school districts, so for lack of a better name, an Education Commission that would consist of two council members, two school board members to begin discussing policy issues of mutual interest. I've had a chance to talk to Superintendent Sanchez from Adams 14. They're very interested. So the next step for us would be if council's willing to proceed to select two council members to serve on this initial effort. I would envision meeting perhaps monthly for the next several months to kind of pull together the structure of the Education Commission and start to develop a list of issues to discuss.
And, you know, I would expand on that a little bit. If we're going to have an Education Commission, which I do support, I think it would be beneficial to have the same two council members to meet with both 14 and 27J, so that you have the commonality of the education component. So we'd have one commission on the city side, but you'd meet independently with the two school districts. Go ahead, Brian.
I've not had a chance to view the concept with the Superintendent of 27J, but I'm guessing they would be supportive also.
I would imagine. I just think it helps build that relationship and expand upon the city's long-term goals. Jason?
Just a question. I do recall us talking about this, but I don't remember talking about it as individual efforts. I think part of the opportunity here is to have a Education Commission, where there is membership of both districts. And I think the missing piece to this would be, I would think, a linkage to the Youth Commission and having delegates that represent either district that are part of that Youth Commission, so that you've got an additional facet to the dialogue. And when we're talking about education policy, the key piece of it, obviously, is from our perspective, from a city, from an ED perspective, obviously, vice versa from the districts in terms of those factors that we have an impact on that are, you know, where we can help them. But I think that added view of the youth in that dialogue would be instrumental. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear that we're not forming two separate standalone endeavors with each district. I think it's about making sure that we're bringing our educational community together, if that makes sense, unless I'm alone in that.
No, I think the reason that this all came up is because I think there's a detachment from the city and the school districts when it comes to, hey, we need some land, you know, let us have the dog track, let us have this. I don't think that, from a planning perspective, that we're engaging enough with our other entities. I think it's been very helpful with the Water Commission. I also support a commission to meet with the Fire District, so that we have all of the different entities playing a role. So I'm not too concerned about how it's set up from the start, as long as we start the commission and we reach out and start making those. And I know Brian has already talked with the Superintendent from District 14. And if it's one commission that meets, I don't care if both 27J and 14 are there at the same time, but I do think we need just solid two members from this council that would serve the needs of both entities from the two school districts. And I think that the commission at that time, it would be a great idea to have them incorporate utilizing the Youth Commission from Commerce City and Brighton when it comes to 27J and from 14, from the Commerce City Youth Commission for dealing with 14. So I think the commission can grow itself, but I think we have to get it started. And so what I would do now is ask if two council members have a desire to serve on that once a month to get started with type of commission for an Education Commission. Is there two council members that have that desire? Mr. McAdonny?
Yes.
Anyone else have a desire to sit on that commission? Mr. Amador? I think that would be good, because that gives us a council member from up north that has, you know, children in the 27J district, and you have grown up through the 14 district. It would be a good fit to have, and I was hoping that that's the way it would work out. Yeah, and you have children in 14. I forgot that you had kids. You look young enough, you didn't expect that. I forget once in a while. Is there anyone else that has a desire, or you want to move forward with the appointment of Jason and Andrew? All right, seeing no other. Steve? As an alternate? Well, what I would do is I would make a motion to allow Mr. McAdonny and Mr. Amador to serve as the council members of the Education Commission with Mr. Douglas as an alternate. I have a second from Mr. Bullock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The Education Commission is set up now. And then when we get to the Fire Commission, we'll be pushing Mr. Keeter over there. All right, buddy. All right, with that said, any other Administrative Council business to come before the council? Mr. McAdonny, your lights on?
Yes.
Okay. Move into reports. Let's start with the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email this week's city manager report. We have several up... We have several updates. One, uh, is in response to Mr. Bullock's request to explore an early start time on Sundays at the rec center. We've done, uh, a financial analysis to indicate the cost and we're suggesting that city council consider that as part of the 2015 budget. Uh, we also have a response regarding Councilwoman Elliott's inquiry about the, uh, use of tennis courts in the community. We have been working with Adams 14. We have some money budgeted to invest in their tennis courts, which you'll see in the update. We're having continuing discussions with the school district to figure out the best way to invest those budgeted funds. We also have an update on several issues related, related to, uh, uh, the railroads, ones regarding the Yosemite Crossing between 88th and 92nd Avenue. We've been working for several months on that. We have a brief update. In addition, we've responded, uh, in cooperation with, uh, uh, the Burlington Northern to address some issues related to the use of quiet zone and wayside horns at 96th Avenue and Highway Two. Then we have an update, uh, regarding some improvements that BNSF will be making at the, uh, crossing on Claremont Street or Claremont, uh, crosses, uh, the, the Claremont Crossing north of 60th Avenue. Uh, additionally, we've included this, uh, week's version of the capital improvement program update, the legislative report, included a bit of correspondence from RTD. And as we do, we've included a look ahead to the city council work schedule. As always, we're open to any questions that council members have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gaylor?
I have nothing further to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Teeter, you have a comment or a question on the reports?
Yes, uh, Brian, if I remember correctly, Fairfax Park when they built that indoor or that caged in soccer court, that could also be utilized as a tennis court. Um, the fixtures are in place. All it will need is just a net to, uh, complete that, so you might keep that in mind in the future, that that could possibly be used.
I had forgotten that. We'll, uh, check the status of that with, uh, park staff.
Yeah, Carolyn's in the back taking notes. The footsole court convert, you know, because we, we had a lack of play on the tennis courts, so we converted those courts to footsole courts and now there's an interest in tennis and, and we did lose, uh, potentially the ones at the old Adams City High School. So, uh, um, I do know we have a shortage of tennis courts in the area, so we'll be interested to see what you come up with. All right, I guess it's time for my, uh, report. I wanted to start off by saying that I did come in tonight and, and turn in, uh, um, a personal complaint about, uh, poples on Highway Two between 104th and 96th Avenue. Um, they're starting to, that, that upper deck is starting to fall apart. And, uh, uh, I know they're, they're getting bad. And then on Peoria Street from I-76 to about 107th, um, same type of problem. And then right at, uh, 107th and Peoria, a couple of valve boxes have, have sunk and created quite a hole and people are actually trying to go around it and, and, uh, go into the oncoming lane to try to avoid this hole because it'll knock your teeth out. It'll mean it's a big hole. Um, and I don't know if there's a leak with the valve boxes or what's going on, why they're sinking, um, but, um, I did bring that stuff in and, and talked to Brian about it earlier. I did pass on a, uh, an email complaint that I got earlier this week about the lack of sit-down restaurants up north and why is the city council continuing to, uh, pursue things like Lech Swab, Taco Bell, McDonald's, Ace, Walgreens? We don't need those type of things, we need a sit-down restaurant. Um, instead of, uh, going ahead and replying on my own, um, I've got the ED staff structuring a, a reply, um, but what it, what it comes down to is for those folks at home and those folks in the audience, um, we really have to get that daytime population up to support sit-down restaurants for the lunch crowd. And those places like Lech Swab and Ace and Walgreens start to provide that daytime population that's necessary for, uh, lunch crowds to, to utilize these restaurants. And, and, uh, we don't decide, um, which restaurant comes, but, uh, we are marketing our community for sit-down restaurants. And, uh, uh, I'll put a plug in there that Buffalo Run is a great place to get good quality food, um, healthy components, um, for sit-down, uh, opportunities right now. Um, not that that takes care of our problem, um, and we are continuing to pursue sit-down restaurants, but that formal response to that complaint will be going out, uh, with my signature through, um, the administrative staff and the ED department. So if you get similar type of requests, um, they'll have that information to, uh, be able to forward on to folks that wonder how come we don't have certain venues. Um, we are, we are growing the community and, and I really am happy with the strides that, uh, this council and, and the staff that we have are making on economic development up north. With that, I'll go into, to my report. Um, I attended Rotary, uh, the water district meeting, myself, uh, Mr. Bullock and Councilwoman Elliott were, were there for the outgoing members. Um, I had the airport coordinating committee meeting, uh, Boy Scout breakfast. Uh, the Boy Scout breakfast was pretty good. It was, uh, down at the Pepsi Center and, uh, the keynote speaker was Peyton Manning. So, uh, that was a, a fun one to attend. Um, again Rotary, uh, then, then myself, Mr. Douglas, Mr. Bullock, um, I think that's who I was there for, uh, United Power Annual Meeting. And I did, uh, bring in and drop off the annual report from United Power, the city's copy, to Brian tonight. And then, uh, also had the Adams County Mayor Commissioners Youth Awards. Um, that was myself and, um, Mr. Douglas and Mr. Bullock as well. So those were the highlights of the last two weeks. Um, and we have a pretty busy, uh, next two weeks coming up. So with that said, does anybody want to add to that report before I move on? I know, uh, JD was, uh, at the youth commission meeting and couldn't attend the, uh, Metro Mayor's Awards. Um, anything else that needs to be added to the report? Shady?
I just really wanted to send a thank you out to the city of Brighton for, uh, going to participate in Arbor Day and plant a tree for us at Turnberry Elementary. So, um, thank you, city of Brighton.
Yeah, well, hopefully, uh, some council members will show up and show the, show the love on the Commerce City side. All right, yeah, you know what? Your brother owes you, that's all I can say. I want to, I want to congratulate Commerce City for planting a tree for Arbor Day and allowing Brighton to come and participate. Right, Mr. Serna? All right. With that said, um, be there no more business to come before the city council this evening? Council meeting is adjourned. However, we do have a, a, a Urban Renewal Authority Board Meeting. Um, so I'll call that to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ford?
Here.
Bullock?
Here.
Douglas?
Here.
Elliott?
McEldowney?
Here.
Benson?
Carson?
Present.
Teeter? Amador?
Present.
Sir, you have a call.
Thank you. Please let the record show that Mr. Benson is not here. I would ask the council, since he is, uh, working and going through, uh, the mountain area with, with his, um, personal job, um, if you'll please make a motion to allow him to be excused from Urban Renewal Authority Meeting this evening? Mr. McEldowney? So moved. Is there a second? Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion is second to allow Mr. Benson to, uh, be excused from tonight's Urban Renewal Authority Meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. He's excused and, uh, we'll go into the, um, first item of business and...
And plant a tree for us at Turnberry Elementary. So, um, thank you, city of Brighton.
Yeah, well, hopefully, uh, some council members will have to show up and show the, show the love on the Commerce City side. All right, yeah, you know what? Your brother owes you, that's all I can say. I want to, I want to congratulate Commerce City for planting a tree for Arbor Day and allowing Brighton to come and participate. Right, Mr. Serna? All right. With that said, um, be there no more business to come before the city council this evening? Council meeting is adjourned. However, we do have a, a, a Urban Renewal Authority Board Meeting. Um, so I'll call that to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ford?
Here.
Bullock?
Here.
Douglas?
Here.
Elliott?
McEldowney?
Here.
Benson?
Carson?
Present.
Teeter? Amador?
Present.
Sir, you have a call.
Thank you. Please let the record show that Mr. Benson is not here. I would ask the council, since he is, uh, working and going through, uh, the mountain area with, with his, um, personal job, um, if you'll please make a motion to allow him to be excused from Urban Renewal Authority Meeting this evening? Mr. McEldowney? So moved. Is there a second? Mr. Amador?
Second.